I think it's better set right there. That's up to you. If they run out of speakers, you'll be able to re-write it there.
Okay, it's eleven o'clock and we will begin the public hearing on Senate File 2117. I want to thank everyone for being here. The list will be pro-con to begin with, and when those are exhausted, we'll just work through the rest of the list. There's a three-minute time limit on each speaker, so if anyone's speaking or has an incident thirty seconds, we'll hold up the green sign that means you're within thirty seconds, and I will try to get you wrapped up as soon as possible after the thirty-second mark. So with that, we'll go ahead and turn over.
Good morning and thank you. I'm Michael Triplet. I represent the Iowa EMS Association. House Amendment 8012 to Senate File 2117 includes language in Section 3 on Ground Emergency Medical Transport, or GEMT. The Iowa EMS Association fully supports this language and urges you to include it in the final version so that EMS programs across the state can ask to benefit from this innovative federal program. GEMT is a federally funded supplement to state Medicaid payments to EMS providers transporting Medicaid patients. GEMT recognizes that an EMS program cannot appear from thin air. All EMS programs need certain amounts of established infrastructure, which is known as readiness funding, in order to transport patients. GEMT funding does not come from the state budget. This language dictates that DHS would have to submit an amendment to its state Medicaid plan, and if approved by the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, programs transporting Medicaid patients could see a significant positive impact to their revenue. Nearly five hundred and seventy thousand Iowans receive care through Medicaid. When a Medicaid patient receives emergency ambulance transport, the state Medicaid-based reimbursement rate of one hundred and twenty-one dollars is far below the actual cost of providing that service. GEMT fills that gap. According to the NOBA, to this bill, the Legislative Service Agency states, "This program is funded with one hundred percent federal funds. There will be some state administrative expenses associated with managing the program, but the federal government has allowed other states that have implemented this program to use the federal dollars drawn down by the program to cover those administrative costs." It is assumed that the department will request this same arrangement as part of its state plan amendment." End quote. Thank you for including this language in the discussions on Senate File 2117. We urge you to include this section in your negotiations on the final version. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Maggie Miller. I'm a student at UNI and majoring in Political Science and Public Administration. I also serve as the Director of Government Relations for Northern Iowa Student Government, and one of my responsibilities is to coordinate our state and federal lobbying efforts. I, along with a group of students, visit the Capitol every week to advocate for student interests at UNI. I'm happy to say that when I look across this room, I see many friendly faces that have always greeted UNI students with a smile and have been willing to level with us even when it's a hard conversation. We are so thankful for all our legislators in the state of Iowa. We understand your job can't be easy, and you have to make those hard decisions that no one really wants to be the ones making. We know that you are trying to do what's best for our state, and we appreciate you. So thank you for taking time away from your families and jobs to spend four days a week down here to make Iowa a better place for all of us. I'm here today to discuss my support for the amendment made last week to hold UNI harmless in this round of deappropriations. If this legislature chooses to hold UNI harmless, it will prove to be a direct investment in our students' lives and in the state that everyone in this room works so hard to protect. You will be investing in students like me, who came to UNI from countless of us unsure of what my passion in life was. Because of UNI's size, I was able to have faculty who were deeply interested in my personal education and growth and encouraged not only me, but my peers, to challenge ourselves to become better leaders than we could ever imagine. UNI has given me countless opportunities, and when I graduate in May, I plan to put what I've learned to use as a member of Iowa's workforce. When you invest in UNI, you're putting the money to good use. No matter where our funding comes from, state, federal, or tuition dollars, UNI is an excellent steward of it. On the federal side, UNI has an incredibly low default rate for the Teach Grant, a four-thousand-dollar-a-year grant given to future teachers who plan to teach in low-income school districts after they graduate. Additionally, we operate on a CPI budget, which acts as a belt-tightening measure and ensures that all of our funding is used properly. Iowa has a long and rich history of being an education center. Our universities are affordable and they provide quality education. UNI is reaching a ceiling on tuition increases. If you look at our peer institutions, we receive lower aid and our tuition is much higher. This is going to make it hard for UNI to compete with the other universities and could potentially take talent out of our state. Our students, faculty, and staff are worth the investment. Luckily, you don't have to take my word for it today. From twelve to two, you can make your way to the Rotunda for UNI Day and learn about the statewide impact our university has. Ninety percent of our students are from Iowa, and ninety-two percent of them stay in Iowa after graduation. Additionally, half of our non-resident students stay in Iowa after earning their degrees. UNI truly is a talent pipeline. We not only employ educators in all ninety-nine counties, but as our state is facing a worker shortage, UNI is helping to prepare students to fulfill that need. UNI educates Iowans for Iowa, and we need your help. We ask that you keep the amendment to hold UNI harmless, and together we can ensure that we make Iowa a great state to live in. Thank you.
I think you might have timed that. That was exactly three minutes impressive.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Cody Olson, and I'm from Iowa State University. And today I want to talk about my family. It's an exciting and it's a scary year for my parents because their youngest daughter is graduating from high school, and she's going to college. And as Sidney's oldest brother, I can't help, I want to give her the best advice that I can as she considers schools and prepares to leave home. And of course, I can't help but be impartial to Iowa State University and share all the tremendous experiences that I've had there that I wouldn't have gotten anywhere else in the world. But I don't know if she can afford to be a cyclone. We grew up below the poverty line, and I had to pave my own way through college. I was fortunate to receive scholarships and financial aid from state and federal programs. But even so, there was never a semester that I went without worrying about having enough money to pay for my house bill or to get the books that I need for school. And as grateful as I am for the love and the support of my parents, I could never ask for monetary support without disrupting my family's financial security. I knew the buck stopped with me, and so I had to juggle academics, leadership roles, two jobs in order to make it. And looking back, I'm not sure if I would have made it if I knew that school had cost even just a few hundred more dollars. Which is why I was immediately alarmed when the first tuition increase proposal came out from Iowa State University to increase rates by seven percent for the next five years. And I had a sick feeling in my stomach when the Iowa Senate announced a fourteen-and-a-half million dollars in deappropriations to the Regent's Universities. And actually, the day before the budget, I was in Majority Leader Dix's office, where student government leaders were assured that the leadership was dedicated to training the workforce of the next generation of our state. But how can the next generation attend college and develop workforce skills with tuition height, university budgets slashed, the Perkins Loan eliminated, and the expansion of differential tuition in our institution? How can students who come from a low-income background, such as myself and my sister, find the support they need to go to school in a state that's ranked bid last in financial aid support? Understand that while these costs may resolve the annual budget, it will have generational impacts. At Iowa State University, their cuts mean faculty furloughs, canceled classes, and discontinued student aid. Many students already second-guess their ability to complete school, and your proposal may be a final nail in the coffin for hundreds. Please invest in the future of our state and place higher education at the top of your agenda. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Cody Smith, and I'm with Iowa State Student Government. Every fall, thousands of new students from all over Iowa, the United States, and the globe begin their adventure at Iowa State University. They choose our beloved institution over thousands of other universities in the world. Currently, I serve as the Vice President of the Student Body at Iowa State. Every day, I am asked to represent the thirty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-one students that have entrusted me to speak on their behalf. Unfortunately, this task has become increasingly challenging in the current political climate. This year alone, through SF2117, the Legislature has proposed a cut of at least eight-point-one million dollars to the Board of Regents' budget. The quality of an Iowa State degree is among the best in the world. Accredited by the Association of American Universities, this puts Iowa State University head-to-head with Ivy League institutions like Princeton and Harvard. Regrettably, public higher education in Iowa is ensnared in a dangerous and unsustainable cycle. The Legislature cuts funding, forcing the university to propose tuition increases to the Board, which will inevitably and by no fault of their own place this immense burden on the backs of students and their families. Furthermore, House Amendment 88012 takes away the Board's ability, the body that best understands the financial situations of its own institutions, to decide where the cuts will be least harmful to students and their families. I believe that this decision is best made by those with a close and intimate relationship and understanding of each university, not the opposite. It seems to me that our state has reached a critical turning point when it comes to public higher education. Iowa State University, the first land-grant university in the entire United States, should serve as a beacon of opportunity for students who are determined enough to pursue a higher education. As a land-grant university, our mission is to be the most affordable to the most students, especially Iowa students. We should strive to uphold this pledge because it is the same students that will contribute significantly to our state's economy, in turn by becoming our local farmers, teachers, agronomists, engineers, veterinarians, and our neighbors. I'm speaking today to ask you to think long and hard about what our priorities are as a state. Past budget reductions are already taking their toll on students, families, and in turn, our state. Unfortunately, our university's reputation and credibility are being threatened by this negligence. As Iowans, these cuts should impact, and their impact should concern us all. In fact, they should concern anyone, including and especially you, our legislators. We are asking for your support of higher education in our state. We know that it is an investment in the future that we want for generations to come. We know that it is an investment in Iowa. We have heard the fiscal arguments, we have heard the political speeches, but this is about priorities. The time has come for higher education to once again be a priority in the state of Iowa. The time has come for you to invest in us, the future of our state. Thank you.
State Representatives, I am Steve Eckley, President of the Iowa State Bar Association. I practice law here in Des Moines. I do civil trial work, and I'm frequently in the courts around the state. I appear today on behalf of the Iowa State Bar Association, representing approximately eight thousand attorneys in Iowa, who are members of the oldest voluntary bar association in the United States. We have registered as supporting HF2117. We registered pro because there were two options, either for the bill or against the bill. We are pro because this bill is much better than the original four-point-eight million dollars in deappropriations proposed by the Senate. We therefore applaud the House in being much more deliberative and thoughtful as to how all of the various cuts to different areas of government will affect the citizens of Iowa who are your constituents. Our concern is that the one-point-six million dollars in deappropriation will still cause significant disruption in the operation of the judicial system here in Iowa, affecting all ninety-nine counties. These include people involved in domestic abuse cases who need immediate attention to their very charged situations, mothers and fathers involved in domestic relations matters, ending marriages and affecting children, the prosecution of criminal cases that may ultimately be dismissed because of the speedy trial requirements, civil cases involving individuals, small businesses and large businesses all around the state have been set for trial for over a year but might be continued for six months or yet another year. Delays causing tremendous increased costs and inconvenience to all parties. All of this affecting either directly or indirectly over half a million cases that must be processed through the Iowa judicial system each year. All of these cases affect citizens, cities, counties, and businesses throughout the state. While it is up to the judicial branch to determine how to manage any further budget cuts, we, as attorneys, know the cuts will affect court services in all ninety-nine counties. Whether it be your constituents who are waiting to close a probate matter so that the proceeds of an estate can be distributed, criminal cases that need to be prosecuted, or civil cases that have been set for trial for months and even years, they will all be negatively impacted. We thank the House for reducing the amount of cuts that the judicial branch will receive. If there could be a further reduction in the cuts, that would be fantastic. We note that after you conclude the deappropriations bill, you have to look at the appropriations for the next fiscal year and hope that you will consider these remarks in how you then appropriate monies to the judicial branch for fiscal 2019. On behalf of the Iowa State Bar Association, we thank you for your efforts. We recognize the difficult choices you must make, and we do appreciate what the House has done thus far to minimize the cuts to the judicial branch and encourage further reduction in the cuts. My remarks are in a written copy. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Kathy Butler. I am a retired state employee and live in Woodward, Iowa. When I was with the state, I worked at the Woodward Resource Center as a resident treatment worker for thirty-six years. I provided total daily care, support, and nurturing to some of our most vulnerable Iowans. I loved my job, and I loved the individuals I served. They were like family to me, and many of us were like family to them that we cared for. I'm greatly concerned over the proposed four-point-three million dollar cuts to the DHS budget that's proposed. The devastating effect on mental health and healthcare services is clear, and even more cuts would harm are critically needy. When I retired, there was a waiting list as long as my arm of folks trying to get placed at Woodward and the other DHS facilities. We had forced overtime every single week, and DHS could not keep up with filling waiting positions for staff. I have friends who many times had to call home and cancel their plans because they were forced to stay for more hours, even on Christmas at the last minute. I wonder how many people here had to make that decision on their Christmas. How many state facilities, how can state facilities bear these cuts? How will Iowans who rely on our state government be affected by the cuts? The individuals who live at Woodward Resource Center never asked to go there, never asked for the challenges they live with every single day, but they do need our help to live their lives. I know firsthand how dangerous the results of this bill would be. Please do not advance this legislation. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Tristan Bernhardt, a Social Science Education and Political Science double-major student from the University of Northern Iowa. I've been following the deappropriation process with great interest this session. While I have greatly enjoyed my time at UNI, financing my education on my own has presented barriers. As the state has been forced to make difficult choices concerning the budget, higher education has been caught in the crosshairs on a few occasions since I came to school. I speak today wishing to thank you for your hard work this session and to support this bill that includes verbiage that would hold UNI harmless in this round of budget cuts. Because UNI relies so heavily on the state appropriation rather than research or athletics, lack of state support has a direct effect on many of the things that UNI does well. As I and many other students first read Senate Bill 3089, which called for a three-point-seven-four-eight million dollar deappropriation, I was very concerned. In my work as Student Body Vice President, I have seen firsthand the budget efficiencies this institution has had to make to prevent any significant changes to the unique and high-quality education it provides. But for how long can these cuts be stomached before amazing educational experiences we deliver are no longer recognizable? Specifically, these proposed deappropriations made me think of my peers in the teacher education program at UNI. I truly believe and have seen some of the best educators in the world come out of UNI's teacher ed program. People like my own high school educators, John Lee, Shannon Dykstra, and countless others that paved the way for me to follow in their footsteps. UNI's prospective teachers don't enter the program in search of wealth, not if they're wise at least. They do so to make a difference for the state and its children. Many of these excellent educators will face significant financial challenges upon leaving the institution and working on a teacher's salary. State appropriations are hugely influential to UNI's ability to get these educators such rich experiences in the field while providing a reasonably attainable cost of education. Continued deappropriations or lack of support from the state act as direct threat to both of these factors. So, in response to this bill, many students just like me made arrangements with our professors, took days out of the classroom to come down here to the Capitol and tell our stories to legislators. We let you know just how great a return on investment UNI is for the state and its economy. We let you know how the institution has served as a great steward of state money. We let you know how the state's most cost-sensitive students are attending UNI in droves. And we let you know how much this institution means to us being able to carve our future in the great state of Iowa. And to our relief, we were heard. The bill before us today includes language that would hold UNI harmless in this round of budget cuts. Amid such difficult budget decisions, this body has the opportunity to make educating Iowans for Iowa one of its priorities. I cannot stress how thankful my peers and I are for your support and hard work this session. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Miana Martinez, and I'm a senior at the University of Iowa, Cedar Rapids native, former University of Iowa Student Government Senator, and current President of the University of Iowa DACA advocacy group, Hawkeyes for Dream Iowa. I was asked to attend this public hearing today to talk about why the Iowa Legislature should vote against this bill and the devastating spending cuts that will leave our public universities further underfunded and leave Iowa students and their families with more debt than at any point in history. I encourage this legislative body to vote no on this bill because this year, our state is at a crossroads. Iowa's budget crisis has been the central theme of every Des Moines Register article that speaks in the struggles that occur in our state. When I was a student, I sat through countless meetings and presentations with the University of Iowa President Bruce Harrell, where I was explained to that the budget cuts would make Iowa public universities more effective and would ensure that we were being fiscally responsible, when the truth of the matter is that these budget cuts are anything but responsible. In fact, I would argue that this is the most fiscally irresponsible thing this Republican-led, single-party state government could do. These budget cuts don't make Iowa universities more effective organizations. These budget cuts force students and their families to max out financial aid options and parent-plus loans. When those resources are no longer available, the expectation of the Republican-led legislative body, the private sector, Navy and Corps, Wells Fargo, and Discover Financial Pickup, where Governor Reynolds and the Republican majority legislator have failed the management of the state budget. According to 2016 U.S. Department of Education data, students that graduate from Iowa public universities average around twenty-six thousand dollars in student debt. The state's student loan default rate on students three years after graduation is seventeen-point-three percent, which is the highest in the country.
All right, we're just gonna pause, get a sense of the situation, and be right back with you.
Representative, you should tell me about the nearest exit. It's out the door to the left.
Out the door to the left is the nearest exit. All right, so basically, we'll be back shortly.
It seems to be the cafeteria that might be having a problem, so let's try going towards the east. It is raining outside, so maybe... If it's another appendage of you, then take it. I mean, whatever.
It's kind of like calling a timeout in basketball, man. It's a free... Yeah, I used to get rides and...
universities leave with outstanding $26,000 in student debt. The state of Iowa's student loan default rate over the first three, within three years after graduation is 17.3%, which is the hot, one of the five highest in the entire country. This is, the student debt crisis is an issue that the entirety of the American population is dealing with, and that we have currently $1.3 trillion in student debt outstanding in Iowans, have $14 billion in outstanding student debt. These baseline statistics show difficulties that people who choose to attend college are forced to deal with. The responsibility and with that, the response of this Republican-led state legislator in this existential crisis is to shift the cost of public education at state universities on students and their families. The choices that this legislator, this Republican-led legislator has made in leading the state government shows that there was and continues to be a failure in prioritizing education as a means of a better life for Iowans and for all those wishes of a life in our state. Instead of tax dollars being invested in the innovators of industry, the state government decided to take the largest breaks for corporations, and Iowa is the only way to invest in the state's future. The decision made by the state government put students in more debt than ever. The new witness test for achievement in the eyes of the state government is how much of your education can be maxed out on a credit card. We have an opportunity to make education the mission of the state of Iowa and to invest in our future and invest in our public education. This will be a strong education to the backbone of America. The opportunity to educate drives us forward. Education ensures the universal means of breaking the class barriers in any society. Education is what led my mother to be the first person in her family to attend college, which would be in the University of Iowa career as an undergraduate. Education with my father in Purple Harbor City, staff sergeant Michael Martinez, from his one bedroom home in the Child's Union of District Los Angeles. He shared with his mother, fellow student, being a graduate of the University of Iowa Harbor School of Medicine. Education will help my grandfather Patrick Smith in his ability to fend off foreclosure and find new careers in his unique job at the Duke Prep. Education is what led my grandmother Donna Smith, who made a secretary in our work at Iowa, to a two-third career in public service at the Duke Press Advisor, the first woman in the state to run for federal office. When we decide that education is the mission of our state, we decide to build a future that's possible for Iowa's children. I encourage you to vote no on this bill. Thank you.
Would everyone please keep to the strict three minutes? Thank you. Go ahead, Gary.
Good morning. My name is Jared Rider. I'm from the University of Northern Iowa and I'm a student there. I'm a senior majoring in public administration and minoring in biology. And I've had a plethora of opportunities because of UNI with my campus engagement. And I've been involved in Big Brothers Big Sisters, campus ministry, student government, and Sigma Phi Epsilon. All my campus involvement has been bolstered by the UNI and the unique opportunities that I've been blessed to have. I'm here to talk to you today about my experience as a student at UNI and what makes it so unique. But first, I'd like to start by saying thank you. Thank you all your service for everything you do. I'm one of the student representatives that comes down here each week with UNI and I see the thankless job that all of you do. I have conversations with various legislators on various issues and I can tell that each and every one of you is making the best effort to provide Iowa with the best services possible that we have available. And lastly, I'd like to say thank you for holding UNI harmless in this current deappropriations bill. At UNI, I'm a student employee at the Financial Aid Office and I work as a private loans assistant. Working at the Financial Aid Office has been a very valuable opportunity for me, not because of the amount of students that take out loans, but because of how unanticipated tuition increases affects students so much, as well as what UNI does to counter those, so that the students are able to go to school and have less worry about student loan debt every day. UNI offers three, mainly three, different resources to students to help manage their finances and keep their student debt low for college. UNI offers a free three-week course called Live Like a Student. This course is designed to provide students with the opportunity to learn about how to budget while they're in college, how to manage your student loan debt, how to fill out a FASPA, and more recently even how to invest after school and what to do to pay that back. All students that take out a private loan and they have to complete a private loan counseling. This counseling is very beneficial because it gives the opportunity for these students to come in, sit down with counselors like myself or other staff members in the office, and have a conversation about what their budget is for that year, that semester, and how we can break that down and ensure that they're not over, they're not taking out too much in private loans or other student loans. Because of this, since 2007, 2008, UNI has decreased the private loan debt by 70% for the student's year. Lastly, Transfer Success Counseling. This is made available to all transfer students and it's highly encouraged. This counseling is designed to help students that are coming from a community college that have experienced relatively low tuition rates and have a budget for higher tuition rates. This also gives students the opportunity to review what they have in student loan debt and what that might look like after they graduate. So as we go through this, we're able to have conversations with them and help them understand what they are doing so that way they're able to leave UNI with fewer debt. And just last spring, in 2017, 79% of students completed Transfer Success Counseling. Thank you, Gary.
Hi, morning. My name's Dan Holman. I'm president of Aspen Council 61 and the privilege of representing several thousand state employees who are going to be adversely affected by these cuts, and I'm here speaking today in opposing all of these cuts. Overall, state government has been cut to the bone, and I know these departments cannot effectively and responsibly provide essential services under this bill. All of these departments are going to be adversely affected, but I want to briefly speak about one in particular, and that is the Department of Corrections. Time and time again over the last few years, the DOC has been on the chopping block, and these cuts have put our state in a dangerous place. Over the last 12 months, the Department of Corrections was cut at every opportunity. 5.5 million was cut from the 2017 mid-year cuts last January. 2018 budget set last April, DOC was cut by another 2.1 million. And now, with only four months left in this fiscal year, you are proposing another 3.4 million dollar cut. That is $10 million in one year. Excuse me, $11 million in one year. There are real consequences for these cuts. Four facilities were shut down completely last year. Lester Heights, the Lodge of Corinda, John Bennett Unit at ISP, and the Sheldon Residential Treatment Facility. All probationary DOC employees were laid off last spring. The riot at Fort Madison with over 70 inmates, while there were only four correctional officers there staffing the yard to respond. In October, a known white supremacist gang member at the Iowa State Penitentiary stabbed a Latino correctional officer repeatedly with two 10-inch shanks while he would let two white officers walk by him. This Latino officer has yet to return to work. Forced overtime for both COs and nurses occurs every single day, weekly. And now, the state cut the nurses' premium overtime, so they're not even getting paid premium overtime. Morale is at an all-time low. The stress of this job is something I don't believe any one of you can comprehend. I will end my comments with this: Your actions here today have real-life consequences. I know that the passage of this bill will directly result in Iowans being put in harm's way and will resort in injury, more injuries and more dangerous workplaces staff go into every single day. As president of this union that represents these workers, this keeps me up at night. When will an officer be killed? Please, don't vote this budget through. Corrections cannot take any more cuts than they already have.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Matt Johnson. I'm a junior at the University of...
I'm a junior at the University of Northern Iowa, majoring in public administration and political science, and I'm originally from Manella, Iowa, which is in Crawford County. The three years I have spent at UNI have been full of opportunities both in and out of the classroom. Those opportunities include the content I have learned from faculty, attention from professors that I have received that have provided me with resources in shaping my future, involvement in various student organizations that have allowed me to connect with other student leaders and community members, and has given me a place to call home. 92% of our graduates stay in Iowa after graduation, where they lead careers, pay taxes, and raise their families within Iowa community. So not only does funding to UNI help students like me create the best future, future possible for myself, but it is a direct investment in helping Iowa grow and be the great place we all call home. I'm here today to thank you for your service to the state and for the amendment that holds UNI harmless from deappropriations, because at UNI, Iowans are truly being educated for the state of Iowa. I also want to encourage you, invite you all to attend the rotunda today to hear different student testimonies and their experiences at UNI and how that's working to shape the state of Iowa. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jerry Foxholm and I'm the director of the Iowa Department of Human Services. Cuts are always tough, and we're in a time period where we have to deal with what are we, what will we do when, when cuts have to be in place. We were told some time ago by the governor that, that we could anticipate some cuts for this fiscal year, and we began preparing accordingly. And we did that and made plans for how we can do it with the following parameters. What we just, what we were committed to was that we would not cut benefits to the people we serve. We serve about a third of all Iowans, that we would not cut the benefits, that we would not cut beds from our institutions, and that we would not cut caseworkers, that we would not exacerbate the problems that they, they already had. And so we designed a budget that was able to do that based on some lower caseloads, not in terms of child welfare, lower caseloads in terms of, of other issues like promised jobs, Iowa and so forth, as, as the economy becomes better where people have jobs, there are fewer caseloads for some of the other things that we do. We also maximized the use of some federal block grants to be able to make that happen. As this body then proposed some additional cuts, we again tried to see if we could meet those cuts and still stay with those same standards, which means that we aren't going to lay off social workers, we're not going to cut beds to institutions, we're not going to reduce benefits to people from the people that we serve. And we are able to do that with the proposal that, that you've given us. Going beyond that, maybe not, but we're able to do that specifically by some of those things that we talked about earlier, but also having the DISH payments and the GME payments go into the public hospitals, which would include the University of Iowa Hospital and Broadlawn's Hospital. By doing that, and only for two months, for two months of this year, having them assume, assume that, that will make it possible for us to be able to both meet the guts of, the cuts that the governor originally proposed based on the caseloads, and then this little piece meets the additional amount that this body is proposing. So I, I basically am telling you that at the level that you're proposing right now, we can live with that. Much beyond that would be, would be a challenge for us, but at the level that you're at, we can do that without reducing beds, without laying off social workers, and without cutting benefits to the people that we serve. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Murray Hart and I am a senior majoring in elementary education and minoring in special education at the University of Northern Iowa. I am originally from Waterloo, Iowa. Throughout my time at UNI, I have been exposed to a college education that has provided me with experiences preparing me to enter the classroom after graduation to make an impact in Iowa schools. It's clear that the whole state of Iowa values education, and the education program at the University of Northern Iowa is a direct representation of that. 99% of the state school districts in every county employ teachers with our UNI graduates, and once I receive my diploma in May, I am excited for the opportunity to be an educator in Iowa. I am here today to thank you for the amendment that holds UNI harmless from any deappropriation. When you support future teachers like me, you support the future of Iowa and its history of being an education capital. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name, excuse me, my name is Carl Schilling. I'm wearing two hats today. I'm representing the Iowa United Professionals, United Electrical Workers, my old union. I retired from the Iowa Civil Rights Commission, after about 25 years, all of which I spent as a union steward, and did some of my best civil rights work as a union steward. I'm also representing the Iowa Organization for Victim Assistance, in that I would not have services to victims of crime curtailed, and to some degree, that has already occurred. So I worry about further cuts in all of those, all of the programs. My wife would tell you that my mind tends to wander, and while I was thinking about this, it wandered back to the old days when physicians used to think the best treatment for illness or for even wounds was to bleed them. The man who shot Garfield, for instance, said that he should only be charged with attempted murder because he just shot the president, that it was the doctors that killed him. I think something like that is analogous to what's going on here. We have a government in crisis, and it appears that we're meeting that crisis by bleeding There are other treatments, I think, that would actually help. One of them, we missed the bogus special session, could have arranged a budget, which even if you had to cut, would have cut on the basis of a full year instead of four or five months. Another thing might have been the rainy day fund, where if we had used the rainy day fund, or if we still used that option, even if we had to pay it back, we could do it on a 12-month basis and do less harm. We could do something about the problem that we have with corporate credits leeching out money that we have. I'm not going to pursue the leeching analogy much further, but there are other solutions. Iowans do well in a crisis when we work together, keep our eyes on the prize, and think more as accountants rather than politicians. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Matt Sinovic. I'm the executive director of progress Iowa. I'm here today unfortunately because... When you support future teachers like me, you support the future of Iowa and its history of being an education capital. Thank you.
My name is Carl Schilling. I'm wearing two hats today. I'm representing the Iowa United Professionals, United Electrical Workers, my old union. I retired from the Iowa Civil Rights Commission, after about twenty-five years, all of which I spent as a union steward, and did some of my best civil rights work as a union steward. I'm also representing the Iowa Organization for Victim Assistance, in that I would not have services to victims of crime curtailed, and to some degree, that has already occurred. So I worry about further cuts in all of the programs. My wife would tell you that my mind tends to wander. And while I was thinking about this, it wandered back to the old days when physicians used to think the best treatment for illness or for even wounds was to bleed them. The man who shot Garfield, for instance, said that he should only be charged with attempted murder because he just shot the president, that it was the doctors that killed him. I think something like that is analogous to what's going on here. We have a government in crisis, and it appears that we're meeting that crisis by bleeding it. There are other treatments, I think, that would actually help. One of them, we missed the bogus special session, could have arranged a budget, which even if you had to cut, would have cut on the basis of a full year instead of four or five months. Another thing might have been the rainy day fund, where if we had used the rainy day fund, or if we still used that option, even if we had to pay it back, we could do it on a twelve-month basis and do less harm. We could do something about the problem that we have with corporate credits leeching out money that we have. I'm not going to pursue the leeching analogy much further, but there are other solutions. Iowans do well in a crisis when we work together, keep our eyes on the prize, and think more as accountants rather than politicians. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Matt Sinovic. I'm the Executive Director of progress Iowa. I'm here today unfortunately because of the Reynolds budget crisis and the failure of Governor Reynolds and Republicans in the legislature to understand basic math. You keep subtracting from state revenue by cutting taxes for businesses and expecting that in the end, we'll have enough to pay our bills. But just ask any working family in Iowa, what happens if you bring in less money? And many are falling behind because of this governor and legislature. Working families know that if you don't have enough money coming in, you can't pay the bills. It's simple math, and that's exactly what is happening. Corporate tax cuts are the fastest-growing line item in the budget, and we have the Reynolds budget crisis as a result. And the impact of this crisis has been devastating. Schools are now closed, college tuition has skyrocketed. Families are now borrowing more than ever to send their kids to college. Students are leaving school in greater debt, and that means they're putting off the purchase of a new car or home, which slows down the economy even further. Meanwhile, your math failure means less access to justice when you cut the courts, undercutting K-12 education because you can't even keep up with the cost of inflation, and less healthcare when you shut down facilities and gut Medicaid. It's a simple equation. You can't cut, subtract, cut, subtract, and somehow think you're going to have as much as you did before. But here are a few numbers I hope you do understand, from some polling done just last month. Fifty-seven percent of Iowans think that corporations and the wealthiest are not paying their fair share in taxes. Fifty-eight percent of Iowans would rather fund public services than personally receive a tax break. And only twenty-six percent of your constituents approve of the job being done by this legislature. Now the governor and legislature seem determined to repeat the math mistakes that caused the Reynolds budget crisis in the first place. Maybe you think this time will be different. It won't. Maybe you think cutting and subtracting from Iowa's future is good policy. It is not. Or maybe you think Iowans are as bad as math that you are. Well, we aren't. We know when public services that we count on are being subtracted from. And if you all don't start funding public services and fighting for working families, we will be counting the days until the November election. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Denise Rathman. I'm the Executive Director of the National Association of Social Workers Iowa Chapter. Thank you for this opportunity to make comments on SF2117. There are three areas of disarray in our state government that fall under the purview of the Iowa Department of Human Services: Medicaid, the child welfare system, and the mental health system. Unfortunately, this is not surprising when you consider the continued budget cuts that this body has delivered to the DHS budget year after year. While we thank you for shielding the Medicaid program for further cuts, the most vulnerable members of our communities, people who live with mental illnesses and other disabilities, and the children and their families that are either involved with or at risk of becoming involved with the child welfare system, are likely to lose services. DHS takes up a significant portion of our state's budget, which makes it an easy target when budgets need to be trimmed. There is no more room to trim at DHS. The members of our Association of Professional Social Workers implore you to find other places to trim this budget. While DHS is working to improve the child welfare system, there is only so much work that can be done with the number of people that are currently on staff, let alone after cuts. Regardless of how many children are on a person's caseload, there are only so many hours in a day. Caseworkers cannot magically create more hours in which to complete the tasks necessary to ensure that the families involved with the system receive the services that they need. The December 2017 Iowa Department of Human Services' initial targeted child welfare review, prepared by the Child Welfare Policy and Practice Group, reported that caseloads for caseworkers, quote, "far exceed those prescribed by the Child Welfare League of America's standards or recommended in most child welfare workload studies." Additionally, the report found that the system used to, quote, "track, access, and analyze data for ongoing services in children and families involved in out-of-home care" is badly outdated. According to the report, DHS has outlined a plan for revision of the current child welfare system that has no timeline for when resources may become available to build it. The report also states that "forward-thinking child welfare professionals of today are teaching staff to use data to assess their performance, identify areas of practice needing attention, and actively monitoring key metrics that adjust efforts towards improving child and family outcomes." This cannot be accomplished with the kind of database now in use on ongoing services in DHS. After hours of child protection intake is handled by operators at the Iowa State Training School for Boys, which refers, it calls to social work supervisors, several interviewed expressed a lack of consistency in the after-hours intake process and suggested that the central intake unit should be expanded to take calls around the clock. There are...
My name is Matt Chapman. Chair Brashley, Vice Chair Henson, ranking members, and all the committee members, and I hope I got that right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. There'll be many more knowledgeable speakers on the specific impact of these cuts, so I'll leave it up to them to discuss those details. I feel these deappropriations are a symptom of a culture shift. I would like to use my time to address what I believe is driving that change. One example of those drivers can be seen in legislation that's been introduced by both chambers this year that would mandate drug testing, work requirements, and quarterly recertification for SNAP or Medicaid-eligible Iowans. In Florida, not only was drug testing ruled unconstitutional as search and seizure without probable cause, but only one hundred beneficiaries were kicked off the rolls at the expense of $22,000 apiece. You can't profile folks just because they're poor. I would also question the logic of taking away health insurance from someone with a substance abuse issue. The work requirements are already in place for SNAP recipients, and most of the content of these bills are redundant. Currently, application processors have a caseload of a thousand applications to go from annual recertification to quarterly would require quadrupling the staff at a cost of $100 million. The perception that struggling disabled and the working poor are crooked or gaming the system isn't a fact-based assumption. This view is perpetrated by biased resources that frame the well-off among us as the victim and those struggling in a system that has been legislated for inequities as takers. Some of the legislators here at the Capitol push this view at the expense of their own constituents. When Senator Schultz and Representative Holt were asked where the idea for the Medicaid and SNAP bills came from, they both said that it was their constituents' number-one issue. Senator Schultz uses the word "welfare" in a way that stigmatizes the working poor. Medicaid is health insurance and is as much a right for every American's well-being as a strong defense. With issues facing Iowa's rural towns, these bills seem like a distraction and a campaign commercial more than a policy that would help their districts. I wrote an article about Senator Jay Chapman in Iowa's Starting Line, using his Facebook page to not just divide the electorate, but incite his base and drive the narrative that poor or undocumented were the causes of his constituent's struggles. I've written Bleeding Hardland about Senator Chapman's tactics as well, and he recently blocked me in all our conversations for Scrubs from his page. The last comment he made to me was that he liked our discussions, and he gave me his phone number. But this isn't Iowa. Pitting citizens against each other and punching down on the most vulnerable is a shameful thing to do. It might rile up the base and make a great campaign commercial, but it is destructive to our state, to our people, and to our country. Thank you.
Good morning, or good afternoon shortly here. My name is Mark Cooper, and I happen to be the President of the South Central Iowa Federation of Labor AFL-CIO. I'm here to speak in opposition to this draconian budget. It places an undue hardship on our most vulnerable citizens. Can't believe that we're even considering these type of cuts to the folks of Iowa. It's horrible. Now, I've heard it described that we need to run our government, our state government, and most government like a family business. This isn't the type of family business or family budget that I've ever seen. I know that within my family budget, if there's an issue in regard to my revenue that I have coming in, I don't quit work, and I don't work less hours, I don't quit my job. Instead, I go out and get another job, or I find another source of revenue. And I challenge you folks to please consider that before passing this horrible, horrible budget. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Good afternoon, my name is Ken Sager. I'm President of the Iowa AFL-CIO. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here on Senate File 2117 today. I have no illusions about the process. The public has been afforded this opportunity to have some input on this disastrous budget adjustment because of the minority party in the House. We have a governor, a Senate majority, and a House majority who apparently appear to be in competition to outdo each other with an "I can cut more than you can" competition. Unfortunately, citizens in need of the legitimate services of our government are going to clearly be the losers. So in spite of the federal government's returning additional monies to the state, this majority will continue to assault unworking Iowans. I, unlike most Iowans, listen to what politicians say. I find it interesting. There is an analogy that many use, and President Cooper stated it earlier, that we need to run our government like we run our family budget. And I think everybody can understand that statement, but it's kind of interesting, you know, from my personal perspective. I know when I was younger and had young children, budgets were really tight. We didn't spend money on frivolous things. We were pretty serious about what we did. And when we needed more money to meet the family's legitimate needs, I worked overtime, or I got another job. What I did not do was cut our income by refusing extra work, or by quitting my job. Yet that is how this legislature and our governor are behaving. We're in the third or fourth round of budget cuts in this fiscal year. This lack of money comes not because of anything that we're doing, but because of the continuous tax cuts and tax credits for wealthy corporations. We have managed, in a booming economy, to crater our state budget. And we're working again in competition between the House, the Senate, and the governor to see who can cut the most out of our budget. And take this budget shortfall, in fact, in case of this budget shortfall, we're yet again concerned about how can we cut our budget more? Potentially by another 23.6%. So for those of you who continue to use that we need to run our government like our family budget, you might consider a different analogy, because there is no one who runs their family budget like you do.
I'm Kristy Dennis-Gerard. I'm the Recording Secretary for the Iowa Reliance for Retired Americans and the Mental Health Nurse. I am concerned about the continued cuts to the DHS budget. Prior to the job that I have now, I was a state employee at the Woodward Resource Center. And the cuts that you're making have consequences for people. Where I work now, one of the people that I took care of at the Woodward Resource Center was discharged, sent to a group home in the community. She was not successful. She has the intellectual capacity of a seven or eight-year-old. She came to me where I work more than ten times. She had gained over a hundred pounds. She was in congestive heart failure. She was kicked out of her group home. They put her in an apartment by herself with four to eight hours of supervision per day. Prior to this, she lived at Woodward at an ICF ID with 24/7 care. She was incapable of taking care of herself, and these budget cuts have consequences. We have facilities out there that people need the services that are there, and we continue to close cottages at Woodward and other state institutions when the need is there. So you've introduced the bill for the Mental Health Access Centers, which is a great idea. But in an election year when mental health is a big issue, it feels like a feel-good bill that's not actually going to help people. I have the police bring people to me where I work all the time, and they cannot get the proper help that they need. They are in and out of the emergency room. Most of them cannot articulate what that they are a danger to themselves or others, which I call magic words, to get a bed inpatient. They say, "No, I'm okay." They are released back into the community without the help that they need. Whether it's medications, or they're prescribed something that the MCOs will not pay for, so they go without. Most of the people that I get are mentally ill, drug-addicted, homeless people. Better forgotten by society. This should not be happening in Iowa. This is a sad state of affairs. We need to do something. We need to stop giving tax dollars away to wealthy corporations in favor of people. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Larson. I am not here on behalf of anyone except for myself. And my children, I'm here as a parent. I have been born and raised in Iowa, and I am concerned with the budget cuts that have been happening over the last several years because of how it is affecting our children in a variety of ways. One thing I wanted to let you guys know is that when you are making cuts or only giving the schools a 1% increase in funding, that that is directly leading to cuts in our schools. When my kids lose their Spanish classes, I know that it's not the school board's fault. I know it's the fault of the people here. When three-year-old preschool gets cut, I know that it's not their fault, it's your fault. When there are no more art scholarships available, foreign language classes have to be cut, and first-grade assistance to my kids' classes of 28 are being cut, I know that that's not the fault of the board and the superintendent and the principals and the teachers. That is the fault of the people sitting in this building here. Also, I want to let you know that your cuts have affected us in another, more specific way. One of my children wears hearing aids. And if you're not aware, hearing aids and hearing problems are not covered by insurance at all. We have very good insurance, and they don't cover anything. So when my daughter was three years old and we found out that she needed hearing aids, we were told they would cost $3,200. At that time, my husband was just out of law school. We were under a mountain of student debt. We had two small children, and I just couldn't even imagine how we were going to pay for it as we sat there trying to look at our budget. And that's when our audiologist told us that the state of Iowa has a fund for children and that they will help us pay for those hearing aids. And that was a real blessing to us. And I found out that that, last year, that was cut. So now, in addition to the $3,000, over $3,000 for hearing aids she will need next year, and that doesn't include the doctor's visits we have to go to and the new ear molds as she continues to grow, which we pay for out of pocket. That has directly affected us. And while we are in a position to afford it, I cannot help but think about those kids who are not in that position, the parents who are making really tough decisions. Because if my daughter did not have those hearing aids, I don't know what her education would look like. I don't know what our communication would look like. We were literally at the point where it was "point to and show me" because she could not speak, because she could not hear. And so I just want you guys to know that this is affecting people very directly. And while I'm not, I'm not, you know, part of some group, I am a parent. There are thousands of us across Iowa that are paying attention to what is going on. And we may not show up to meetings, we may not, you know, have this chance to email everyone every time something important comes up. We are watching, we are listening, and we will vote. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Benjamin Nelson. I'm a third-year student at the University of Iowa studying economics and philosophy. I grew up in a divorced household, split my time equally... I grew up in a divorced household, splitting my time equally between Burlington, Iowa and Sheffield, Iowa, where in Burlington, Iowa, my mother worked construction building elementary schools, and my father worked in a factory that manufactured grain bins. In retrospect, I honestly can't imagine a more quintessentially Iowa upbringing. By no means did I grow up with everything that I wanted, but I grew up with what I needed, and I learned to work for what I wanted. My parents had always encouraged me to go to school, and to that end, they planned ahead and gave me a college fund with my brother. When I accepted my spot in the class of 2019 for the University of Iowa, I was incredibly eager, armed with the excitement to take advantage of every opportunity, and armed with a budget to make it happen. But the thing with budgets is that they require predictability, something that this legislature has not provided us widely. The virtues of hard work, thrift, and planning are toothless on hard-working Iowan families if the trend of mid-year budget cuts continues. However, I do recognize the pragmatic needs often outweigh philosophical ideals. If cuts must be made at this time, it should be done by those that can minimize the impact. Therefore, I encourage this body to give the Board of Regents discretion to decide where cuts can and where be made. It's both a matter of efficiency and purpose that the Board can right their own ship during this turbulent time. You owe it to those Iowans who play fair and diligently work hard to make ends meet and to achieve the goals that they earn. Do right by them. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Noel Mills. I'm from Waterloo, but recently have had the pleasure of calling Iowa City home as I pursue a degree in environmental policy and planning from the University of Iowa. I have found nothing but incredible faculty, challenging coursework, and boundless opportunities to pursue my passions since becoming a Hawkeye. I have great pride in my school and the state that funds it. However, in the past few years, there have been drastic budget cuts to the universities that bring Iowa so much prosperity. The value brought to the state has not been met with the funding needed to maintain the high quality we expect in every aspect of Iowa life. I appreciate all the work being done to respect the taxpayers' dollar by refraining from tax hikes. Iowans deserve to have their hard-earned income respected, but by deliberately discouraging research, exploration, and education, we are divesting in the qualities that make Iowa a place for growth. As tuition increases, students become ill-equipped to afford opportunities like unpaid internships, studying abroad, and conducting research. These opportunities not only enhance higher education, but they benefit the entire state. Study abroad programs send Iowans around the world who bring the world back to Iowa. University research not only generates economic development, but also strengthens the reputation of Iowa as an innovative state. This isn't a conversation about how big of a hit the state universities can take. It's a conversation about how big of a hit the identity of our state can take. Are we going to be a state that settles for mediocre budget cuts that severely discredit our hard-earned reputation? Or one that rises to the occasion of crafting a budget that doesn't stifle the ability of our young people to succeed? It's up to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Earl Kilgore from Broadlands, and I believe I'm the second-to-last speaker. Wanted to talk this morning about the requirement for the University of Iowa and us to pay the state portion of DISH and GME federal payments. It may not seem like a big hit, but first of all, the hit is quite a lot larger than has been communicated to you. It was communicated at $82,000, and we're quite certain that the hit for the last four months of fiscal year 2017 would be $248,000 for us, and we base that on our numbers from IME. As you may know, Broadlands has undergone an extraordinary transformation over the last 10 years. The quality of our services have improved a great deal, and we are a lean, mean machine. We provide services efficiently at a much lower cost than other hospitals in the state of Iowa. We're proud of what we do, and we're proud of what we've accomplished. In 2015, we were on track to make about $20 million on a $180 million budget. That's a much larger margin than we had ever made before. But then the Affordable Care Act did this at the same time, and we ended up making for 2015 $42 million on a $182 million budget. That's shown in the annual figures you have in the page. The following year, we made about $20 million, and we are on track this year to perhaps make three or four. What happened to that money? Let's look at that second page that says, "Financial Hits to Broadlands." We voluntarily reduced our tax levy to the tune of what's currently about $10 million. We also are paying Oak County's portion of their budget shortfall, Medicaid savings from last year, the absence of prior authorizations, and those have resulted totally in about a $30 million impact. So that large surplus is simply gone. We do have $171 million in the bank. We believe we need that. The average hospital in Iowa has 200 days of cash in the bank. And if you'll notice in that fourth column, for 2018-19, if we lose Medicaid expansion, which we could, that's a $20 million hit, and we go to losing $14 million a year. So we would ask that you reconsider the impact on Broadlands. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Kim Hegelmann. I'm from Homestead, Iowa. And I am here not representing anybody in particular, but I would say the Iowa population in general. I have no special interest in medical health care and Medicaid. I don't take advantage of any of those programs. I do not have a special interest in universities. I'm not a student. My son has graduated. But I live in Iowa, and I care about the quality of life in Iowa. And therefore, I'm very disturbed about the cuts, especially to higher education this year and in general, the funding that has been reduced over the years for region universities. Our region universities, it was a time when, and I came here specifically 30 years ago to go to Iowa State for a plant breeding program. And there was a time when plant breeding and agriculture engineering were the top programs of the United States. And Pioneered, Hyren, Mal Dukon Pioneer, and John Deere had great collaborations with those universities, with the universities. And they hired those students, and they did research together. And now, instead of those companies providing a symbiotic relationship, now we're giving them tax cuts. We're giving tax cuts and tax breaks to Dukon Pioneer and John Deere. And so instead of a symbiotic relationship that's better for taxpayers, workers, students, and progress, we are now one-sided, thinking that if corporations are doing better, we're all doing better. But we're not. Those profits go to those stockholders. So I would like to say that these cuts are very disturbing, and we don't have a spending problem. We have a revenue problem. And this year, I know you can't solve our revenue problem, but there's a rainy day fund, and I please implore you in the future to start looking at what the priorities are and where we're spending our money. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the list that we were given. So at this time, the public hearing will adjourn.